The title of this talk is "All sufficiently regular sets may be projective."
Thank you very much, and thank you for the script, G. The title "Projective" really means delta 1, 2. For some reason, I like to keep symbols out of my titles. We'll get to what "sufficiently regular" means. No, I should say this is joined work with Sladeh and Shalh. I subscribe to Niels' theory of co-operations. It's worked out well for me. So here's the theorem the talk is about. This actually answers part of question CG on Sartor's problem list, so he owes us four problems. So let's see. We need an anti-large cardinal hypothesis for this. So if for some subset of Omega, every set of A, every set is constructible from A, then there's a proper forcing extension in which every universally measurable subset of the bare space is delta 1, 2. The bare space is really unimportant. Really, any uncountable in Polish space. Conclusion to the equivalent. You put that in Polish space when it's non-instructible, completely measurable, and metrized by this. Sigma 1, 2, right? So analytic is sigma 1, 1, second analytic is pi 1, 1. Sigma 1 means continuous preimage of a coanalytic set. And delta 1, 2 just means you and your complement are both sigma 1, 2. So consistently, all universally measurable sets are delta 1, 2. In some sense, the importance of the theorem--I mean, we'll get to what universally measurable is-- but the importance of the theorem is just that there's a class of constructions of universally measurable sets that we're not missing. We can't, you know, in ZFC produce universally measurable sets by our own in the projective hierarchy, and we already know how to do it. Okay, so what is universally measurable? A subset of Polish space, of F and Polish space, is universally measurable. If it's measurable, it's respect to every complete, finite, Borel element of the space. Or, if you prefer, it's universally measurable if all its continuous preimages, and your favorite version of the reals are Lebesgue measurable. Right? That's often an easier way to think about it. Or, if you like forcing, it's equivalent to saying that after you randomly force-- random forcing, every real, every element of your space is in a ground model Borel set which is contained or disjointed from your set X. Of course, the Borel sets get reinterpreted in the extension. So those are three ways of saying what universally measurable means that are all equally useful in different contexts. Okay, so the universally measurable sets form a sigma algebra. They contain the analytic sets in this talk. And they refer to set universally measurable sets, which are not in the sigma algebra general. They're only sets as exotic universally measurable sets. And we'll talk about constructions of those in a second. Now, the theorem needs an anti-large cardinal hypothesis. That's what the V equals L of A is, because if there are even many wooden cardinals, then every forgettable set is universally measurable. Projective hierarchy is proper, so there are projective sets which aren't delta 1, 2, and they are all universally measurable in the large cardinal context. Okay, so we're working in the anti-large cardinal context. Okay, so I want to talk about ways that people know how to construct exotic universally measurable sets, and in fact, all of them are connected to universally null sets, as it turns out. Okay, so a set is universally null if it has measure 0, respect to every-- now, we have to say atomless complete measure. We can't give a point's positive measure, it must be 1. It used to be the null hand, you said. And equivalently, if every injective continuous preimage of X is Lebesgue null, or if, after random forcing, every new real is a member of a ground model Borel set, disjointed from X. All right, so those are the null sets, and those are much better understood than the universally measurable sets in general. But as far as I know, all of the constructions of exotic universally measurable sets are subsumed by the following two examples. This theorem, Retsch's law, of course, subsumes a lot of classical constructions, but it just says, "A set in the bare space which is well-ordered by a universally measurable order, in particular, a Borel order, is universally null." It's like a Hausdorff gap. A Hausdorff gap is one of the classic examples of the universally null set, but it really has nothing to do with it being a Hausdorff gap. It's just, it's two well-ordered sets, which are well-ordered by a Borel relation, and that's why it's universally null. And that's almost all the examples, except for this nice example of Richard Royd, where he constructed a universally null set of cardinality non-zero, the least cardinality of a set that's non-zero, not Lebesgue null. Both of these examples are adaptations of the proof which will be used as a counterexample. Not sure if they're adaptations. Okay, so there are at least--well, two are the non-noles, so at least two are the algebrum in the universally null sets. But these are all the strange universally null sets, all the strange universally measurable sets. Okay, so there's an earlier paper with Sartor and also Ty and Neiman, where we just looked at adding a lot of random reals or Sacks reals. And if you add more than the continuum many of them, then every universally measurable set in those models has the property that it has a complement of both the unions of fewer than continuum many Borel sets. And in fact, in the random case, that characterizes universally measurable sets. You have a lot of random reals, that's just what universally measurable is. In that model, it means you and your complement are unions of fewer than continuum many Borel sets. The point of these models was to show that it's possible to have only continuum many universally measurable sets. And of course, the continuum has to also be two yellow, along those models. Now, in our new result, all of this stuff is in a whole bit as well, except for the progress. So universally measurable sets will all have a progress. If they are non-ordinary, you know, continue with fewer than continuum many Borel sets also. And you'll see that just arises naturally out of any attempt to classify universally measurable sets. And that's a natural topic construction. Okay. And I just want to mention, this is the big problem about universally measurable sets is can they all have the property fair consistently? And that looks like a very hard problem. I mean, maybe there's some construction we're missing after over many decades of trying to construct universally measurable sets, but who knows? That was like a very hard problem. Just to show you how far we are from understanding it, this is a question that Akshata Kumar asked on that overflow. I have to be a little careful. There's something called universally fair, which is much, much stronger than the universally measurable, and also much, much stronger than having every continuous preimage have the property fair. So there's a notational trainer out there. But okay, so is it consistent with ZFC that every universally measurable set is universally fair? Which is totally outrageous. I mean, a large cardinal is implying, but does ZFC imply? No, but nobody has the answer to that either. Impressive. Here's another question. Am I still under 10 minutes? Oh, okay, I'm just gonna skip this. I like this question a lot. It looks like a more tractable version of the question of getting every universally measurable set to have a property fair. So I'll take the time and do it by the time. Looking at classes of probability measures on subsets of Omega. One class of measures has the property that the measure of N being in goes to 0 within. And another class of measures has the property that N being in goes to 1 within. So that's two disjointed classes of probability measures. And this is a question from the '70s, Malden, Price, and Weisacker, completely from the analysis of probability. Does there have to be a universally measurable set? I mean, in my opinion, it's still an interesting question for any set, but that's not the way they said it. But does there have to be a universally measurable set which has measure 0 for all the measures in the first class, measure 1 for all the measures in the second class? So this is a specific example of a measure separation, general measure separation problem, but I think it's what the economic instance of that problem. And so no set that have the property fair that has this property. But this is open. Also, I did--so probably it's consistent that there be no such set, and that was a lot easier to show, because the universally null sets aren't going to get in the way. Really, that's the--universally null sets make everything hard for the previous problem. But they're not really relevant for this particular case. Okay, so that's all. Oh, one more slide of this. Okay, so of course, you can construct universal, like exotic universally measurable sets with the help of cardinal characters with assumptions. The weakest one that I know of that builds you a universally measurable set without the property fair, which again, we're just going for universally null, so it's a non-meager universally null set, is the assumption that non-zero is at least caustically greater than d. But that's the weakest hypothesis that we know how to do it from. And it seems reasonable that either of these two parts ought to be sufficient, but we don't know how to do that out here. Okay, so the paper with Neiman and Shalh use random forcing and Sacks forcing, but they're unlikely, those approaches, to make progress on these problems. The reason is that when you do those forcings, your ground model universally measurable sets reinterpret as universally measurable sets. If you have descriptions of them in terms of Borel sets and measures, and you run the same descriptions, and you generate new universally measurable sets in the extension. So if you have, you know, strange universally measurable sets, you're not going to get rid of them with this forcing. They just reincarnate, or whatever you want to say, in the extension. Now, I don't know if the approach in the current paper has the same issue. I've changed my mind like four times in the last week, but I think it doesn't. But I'll be safe and say I don't know. All right, so we'll see. Okay, so that's all background, and then I'll just talk about the proof. So again, who we're trying to do is get every universally measurable set to be delta 1, 2. The idea of the proof is almost just to make every set of reals of size alpha 1 delta 1, 2, and then magically everything else just works out the way it's supposed to. You know, Sartor outlined this plan to me, and I didn't believe it, because if the plan didn't mention the problem, which, you know, didn't seem reasonable. But okay, that's fine, it worked. I mean, all right. I should say that this inclusion here already convicts large barbers. You can't have every set of size alpha 1 maybe delta 1, 2 in a large barber context. So we need some anti-large cardinal hypothesis. This one, V equals L of A. Its use, though, is to produce a set of reals which is delta 1, 2, and furthermore, delta 1, 2 involves forcing extensions, and it codes a ladder system. So it codes a choice for each kind of lower order of a subset, a codemask, or a fortite, one way or... So if V equals L of A, a real, you can do that. You can find a delta 1, 2 set that does that. Okay, so that's the only use of that hypothesis, to come up with a set. Now, I said almost. The almost part is this part, so the problem is mentioned in this part of the plan. We have, for an ideal I, what we call a pathological, an I-pathological function is a function from the Cantor space to 2. And what, in every basic open set, if I have a Borel positive, bi-positive subset of that set, I take both values on that Borel set. Right? This is basically the opposite of being I-measurable, right? You know, I is the, well, the non-ideal is out to be Lebesgue measurable, and I is the immediate ideal is out to be Lebesgue measurable. So this is being I-pathological. Okay, so we're going to start with an I, with okay. So we'll say non-pathological when the ideal I is the ideal of Lebesgue null sets, and totally pathological when it's the ideal of countable sets. And it's easy, just by well-ordering reals, to produce pathological functions. And furthermore, if V equals L of A, you can produce pathological functions which are delta 1, 2 in A. So those are the things we work with. Delta 1, 2 sets coding a suitable ladder system and a suitable pathological function. I'm leaving exactly how pathological L of A for the moment, but totally pathological or non-pathological are good enough for the moment for what we're doing. Okay, so again, if I make every set of reals of size alpha 1 delta 1, 2, we're going to do a countable support iteration of forcings of length greater than the continuum, but whatever. We might as well start with CH and do it of length 1, 2. The partial orders in the iteration are all the same. They're all of these partial orders, and I'm calling them Q, C, F, G. We have a fixed C and a fixed F. And what does Q, C, F, G do? It takes N of G from length 1 to 2, and then by countable little digits adds this H, where F and H together at countable little order predict what G did. Right, so this is kind of standard. It looks like a ladder, you know, realization, or we can diamond, or something. Right, we have our fixed F, and then someone gives us a challenge, which is the G, and now H has to predict below alpha, what happened at alpha according to G. Right? And that's the plan. And so that's all we're going to do, is just run this forcing enough. Doesn't look like it has much to do with making--
Kind of closed, right?
It's not kind of closed. Yeah, right, so here, yeah. The partial orders are proper, they don't add reals. However, sequences of Omega may do add reals. So the individual forcings don't add reals, but if you have as a challenge this at a real of size alpha 1, then you can put together a block of forcings of length Omega, which adds a real. And furthermore, that real will code your challenge set relative to the ladder system at F. And furthermore, if we have our ladder system and our F which are both delta 1, 2, then the real codes your set X, makes your set X delta 1, 2 also. So we can think our real iterations blocks of things like this for making the sets size alpha 1 delta 1, 2. That's all I wanted to say about that. All right, everything works itself out, that's promised. So, I mean, the overall plan is similar to the previous paper, and similar to a bunch of other papers before this that do similar things. The idea is, you have a, in the end, you're going to have a universally measurable set, but your iteration is going to have length, you know, greater than the ground model continuum. Length is Omega 2, if you started with model CH or whatever. So if you have a universally measurable set in the extension, well, then in fact, it was already-- there were lots of intermediate models in which the set was decided, and the set was already universally measurable at that point. So at that point, for every measure you saw, you had a response to it already. And the point is that at that point, you've trapped the set. The set, there's no more freedom in the set at that point. So the rest of the iteration grows, but there are no more choices to make about it. So that's the idea. And in the case of random forcing, the way this works is that random names for reals are in effect just measures. They induce measures. So you have a name for any real, that induces a measure, but then you have a witness to universal measure over it for that, and it just traps the name for the real. And so there's no freedom, you basically determine the whole set. And the Sacks forcing situation is basically the same, which is a little bit more complicated. Same idea. Okay, so I'm going to tell you-- we replaced that move with something I'm calling local randomness here. I worked very hard at making this slide simple and comprehensible and true, but then eventually I realized that at least one of those things had to go. Yeah, all right. At least one. And I'm not saying most, any number. So we're not doing random forcing, but our forcing can be made to look locally like random forcing. And that's really the trick here. So I'll read what it says, but it may not be super informative. But all right. So we have our iteration, big C for any condition, little p, right? And any big enough, countable, just a model of some big enough piece of the universe you can do. Iteration, we can find a branching tree of pi Omega of conditions in P with the property, now so done with the finite branching tree, so it has this burden that comes with a big measure on it. Okay, so for any Borel set now of paths, we can find a Q below P that forces that the generic filter will contain a path that's in E. And that essentially means that we've made our forcing, a little piece of our forcing, look like random forcing. And since names of random forcing are induced by measures, then we have the same sort of trapping in this intermediate model. So we're in a middle model where a piece of our set is universally measurable, right? And now, now it's the same argument as before, we're using this. We have a name, it's already real, that's induced by a measure. And by combining that measure with this measure, we can apply universally measurable, universally measurable, and trap that real. Our set is decided, just like the forcing. Okay, so that's really the key point. I mean, a lot of math goes into this slide. Now, just the construction of T takes about two pages. I mean, okay. But in fact, it's just an adaptation of what's in Shalh's Whitehead papers. It's an old technique, just slightly tweaked. This is not really something new, but it still takes a long time to say it. Set it up. But it is a tweaking of old techniques. Okay, so there are a couple more minutes, and I just wanted, there are three slides left. So two things that have to be done in the proof, and maybe it'll all work. One is, the function we started with was pathological. Didn't matter if it was non-pathological or totally pathological. Beginning's always pathological, it's stronger than non-pathological. But we're using the same F the whole time, and we needed to stay non-pathological. It's not even going to be a total function anymore once we add reals, right? But we're going to use the same F the whole time, so we need the function to stay non-pathological. Now, it just happens to be-- I mean, what exactly is preserved by what forcings is a big, deep, murky, complicated area. But having dug through it, I feel confident in saying that Lebesgue outer measure is actually preserved by our iterations, and so our function stays totally pathological. Or not totally. They don't stay totally, that's impossible, but they stay non-pathological. Non-pathological throughout the iteration. That's one thing. To use the tree that we construct in the main argument, you need to be able to shave off pieces of it. And that shaving off is an instance of what's called the disintegration theorem. Right, so you need to pick out pieces of your tree as you go. So, okay, so this instance of the theorem, again, every finely branching tree S has its own version of Lebesgue measure on it, which I'm giving it called the use of S. Now, if I have two trees, if I'm mapping a big tree S down to a small tree T in an order and length-preserving way, right? I want to be able to know, but if I have a set of positive measure in a big tree, I could pick a path in a small tree whose preimage still has big measure, right? And that's, well, this image is integral formally, it's a disintegration. It's more explicit, but this doesn't mean, right? If I have a set of paths of the big tree of positive measure, then for positive measure, I have some small tree. If I look at its preimage, and its corresponding Lebesgue measure on the preimage, and the trace of E is still of positive measure there. So, okay, so that's part of using that tree. Okay, so one more slide. Construction didn't really have very much to do with measure. In fact, if you made the function totally pathological at the beginning, it had nothing to do with measure. Like the problem we were trying to solve wasn't in the construction at all in that case. So what other ideals does it apply to? Right, so just to give this some kind of framework. If you have a sigma, any sigma algebra you want, A, on bare space, you can say something is universally A if every continuous preimage of your thing is in A. And you can even induce it with an ideal. You have an ideal I, and AI, the sigma ideal of things that are a member of I away from the Borel set. And now you can run everything we just did on A sub I, right? And when does it work? Well, it works if countable support iteration is of partial order-- well, just literally the same iteration we just did. You don't have to change the iteration at all. So if literally the iteration we did preserves I positivity, that's the first condition. The second one is you need this Hume-Ni property, the one at the bottom of the slide. You know, if I have a big set, and be able to plot a fiber where the preimage is big in corresponding sense.
Would this be A sub I?
Yeah, right, so I defined it, right? Right. If I have an ideal I, then A sub I should be the sigma ideal of subsets that are in I away from the Borel.
It has nothing to do with script A, P. That's the definition.
The definition of A sub I.
But it has nothing to do with the script A of the paragraph above.
Right, yeah, that's a definition of being A, universally A. And this is an instance of an A that you could apply the notion universally A to. So Is, Is induce A, A universally A, yeah, that's all. Okay, so this includes the meager ideal. I mean, the meager ideal is probably easier to deal with than null ideal. Okay, so the question is, what other ideals? That's just a big gigantic massive question, but there's work to be done there. There is hope, because of the failure of the reinterpretation problem-- reinterpretation, yeah, I guess so-- that you can make progress on the bigger questions of this iteration. That's all. Thank you.
Any questions for our speaker?
Yes, yeah. So this is kind of hanging on the complexity of the model ordering of L of A, right?
Yeah.
So do you know if you push this to other models and do a similar thing, where all the universally null sets are of the same complexity--
Oh, what had that large cardinal or something? Yeah, it should work just fine. Yeah, right. Yeah, all right, so you could probably just do it over, you know, the one wooden model and then every universally measurable set, whatever that is.
Delta 1, 2.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that should work fine.
Any more questions? Let's thank the rest of the room. And next talk will be five minutes. And next talk will be five minutes.
G is somehow relaxed property. G is countably compact. But now H is not arbitrarily separable group. It is just a metrizable separable topological group. And the same in such a situation. And the product of G, which is countably compact, times H, again, each closed subgroup is separable. But if you want to generalize this result, for example, for H, which are not anymore separable metrizable, but just have a countable number, then this proof does not work. So this is actually an open question. What happens if G is countably compact and separable? Is this proof that all closed subgroups are separable? And H is a topological group, is a countable number? You don't know what happens in the product.
Do you know that the projection map is not closed?
No.
The projection map is not closed. Do you have a chance?
Once you don't know, the projection, it's not closed, the proof works.
I was wondering if that's an open question, but no, it's not. You have a counter.
It's not closed, but maybe you have some other. No, it's the angle. Okay. Now, let us consider this class of strongly separable groups as a class of topological groups, which can be considered if this class results natural topological operations. So it behaves very nicely. It is closed under finite products. It is closed under taking closed subgroups. It is closed under taking continuous homomorph images. So it is very nice class. And the most general result, how to describe the topological group which belong to this class of S-separable spaces? It is the following. Assume that your topological group G has the following property. It contains a separable compact subk, such that the closure G over K is countable. Then such a topological group G is S-separable. It is actually the best result we obtain, because we can ask many, many questions. And here you see the slide. It's very, very natural questions, but all those questions are open. We don't know if every separable locally compact group G is S-separable. We know each compact group is separable, but we do not have any examples of separable locally compact groups are not S-separable. Even for the group of the reals A, which is just a real line, we don't know if it is S-separable or not. We don't know even if there exists a separable metrizable group which is not S-separable. And also we put a question for some more specific groups which are separable, but we don't know if they are strongly separable. So this problem is completely open. Now, what happens if we take the product of two, let's say, a billion topological groups? Each factor, we assume, has this property. Again, each closed subgroup is separable. And then we were able to show that under the assumption that 2 to omega 1 is continuum, then we constructed two pseudo-comp합able topological groups G and H, such that in each factor, all closed subgroups of G, both in G and H are separable, but the product of G and H contains a closed sigma compact non-separable subgroup. This is not an easy result, because you know, it is a construction by trans-infinite induction. We need to keep some bookkeeping about separable subgroups. And then we need this assumption that 2 to omega 1 is equal to continuum. We don't know how to do it without this assumption. Now, what happens if we take the product of two locally compact spaces? First of all, if one factor is just a finite dimensional Banach space, B, let be the finite dimensional Banach space, and A, be any topological vector space in which all closed linear subspaces are separable. Then this product, B of A and A, all closed linear subspaces are separable. It's not difficult. We saw many of them. But we don't know what happens if this proposition, instead of finite dimensional Banach space, we put infinite dimensional Banach space. It's open question. Now, what is the proof of this proposition for one? Again, we use the idea of projections. Okay, now, take any closed linear subspace C in the product of B times A. And now I consider projection phi, but it would be a projection on the first factor, on factor G. Pi, actually, here I use also already for the restriction. So pi is a restriction of the projection on the first factor to C. Then what do we have? We have pi, which is linear, and hence the image is just a finite dimensional Banach space. Here, we do not need to return any kind of Fortowski theorem, because in such a situation, that if you have a continuous linear mapping onto a finite dimensional Banach space, then this mapping is automatically an open mapping. So this mapping pi is linear open mapping onto some separable space D. Again, the kernel of pi, it would be separable. The image is separable. And then image C also is separable, because again, I used this observation, this separability in the strict space group. If we replace B here, this group, by infinite dimensional Banach space, this group doesn't. So we don't know what happens. B would be here in the dimension. Now, let me remind you the definition. The topological space X is called pseudo-complete. It's known in definition. If there exists a sequence of pi basis, it's such property. Okay, so it is the definition goes back to Oxtovi. So what is the definition? Definition is the following. That for every sequence of open subsets of Un, such that the closure of U is in N plus 1, which are subset of Un, then the intersection of those Un is non-empty. This is the definition of pseudo-complete spaces. It's known that check complete spaces are pseudo-complete. Each check complete space has a property, and arbitrary product of pseudo-complete spaces, again, pseudo-complete. Okay? And now we were able, in the same spirit that we do, as we did for the product of two topological groups, we constructed under the same assumption that 2 to the power omega 1 is continuum. Then, under this assumption, there exist two pseudo-complete locally compact spaces K and L, such that all closed linear subspaces of K and L are separable, but the product K times L contains a non-separable sigma compact closed linear subspace. And we don't know how to get rid of this assumption, 2 to omega 1 is equal to C. So we don't know how to prove that these series are valid in CSL. That's all. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions? Paul's paper. Okay, let's thank Paul's paper. The next part will begin in eleven minutes.
Thank you for the invitation. The title mentions a result that answers some old questions of Shapnitz. But really, the start is a pretext to show you some questions about sequential groups that I think will require completely different techniques than we've used so far. So, to remind you of the important definitions, these are generalizations of well-known properties of metric spaces that come from analysis. So first one is Frechet, and the intuition is very simple. Your closure operator is described in terms of convergent sequences in the sense that everything that can be reached in a closure can be reached by a convergent sequence. A slightly wider class is the sequential spaces. And what a sequential space is, is that the closure operator is not directly described by sequences, but it's sort of determined by sequences. So if you learn functional analysis from the set of books by Reed and Simon, methods of mathematical physics, Frechet spaces generalize what they call an epsilon over 2 trick, and sequential spaces generalize what they call an epsilon over 3 trick. The connection to analysis is always fascinating in sequential groups. So while sequential spaces do not have the closure operator described directly in terms of convergent sequences, you can invent a definition for the closure operator in terms of reaching points by convergent sequences, but after iterating the closure. So to formalize this, you define what a sequential closure is, and that is all the limits of convergent sequences, and then you repeat this operation. I think my brackets are in the wrong spot here, but the idea is clear. So now, the measure, the ordinal that separates Frechet spaces from sequential spaces is this idea of a sequential order. So how long do you have to repeat the sequential closure in order to reach all the points in your closure? So if you mix this notion with sequential groups, a lot of interesting questions show up. It's not difficult to come up with an example of a non-necessarily homogeneous space that has sequential order other than 1. You just basically do the naive way, take the naive approach of converging once and then converging twice, put the appropriate topology on it, and you will have what's known as a sequential cone or error space. So S2, all these names refer to the same space. But once you introduce homogeneity into the picture, it becomes a little more topologically challenging. And once you want to look at topological groups, then intuitively it's not clear that a sequential topological group is maybe non-Frechet. And to think about it in light of not clear intuitively, just imagine adding this, now using the algebraic operation of adding the one cone to another, just add the sequences together. And you will either intuitively either reach sequential order omega_1 or your group is Frechet. So if you add another condition to this, namely that the group is compact-like, then that creates a whole new set of difficulties, and I'll mention them a little later. You'll notice that the compactness itself is missing from this list, and that's because there are no interesting sequential compact groups. If the group is even countably tight, there was a result of, well, Dimak Shapnitz, who is a co-author of this work, said that it was a result of Yefremov, but I don't have any reason not to believe him, that every compact sequential group or every compact countably tight group is metrizable. So there's nothing interesting to be seen in compact groups. And that's why this list starts with countably compact. So it turns out that it's consistent, you can consistently kill all countably compact sequential groups. And the model is a modification of the model by Michael Kouchak and Ronald Garcia. And the idea is essentially that most of these constructions work in a kind of similar manner. It's an iteration, and then you wait for enough witnesses to accumulate in intermediate model, and either something nasty happens to the group that persists till the end of the iteration, or if it doesn't happen, you kill something and you make it happen. And so since the groups are kind of, the topology is kind of countably determined, you can carry out this idea. So now, the question was, does there exist a consistent counterexample? So is it possible to divide under other assumptions, such as CH or something stronger, build an example of a countably compact sequential group that's not Frechet? And moreover, Diman had a whole list of questions in his survey about groups of every sequential order, not just not Frechet. And when I talked to him about working on something, I mentioned one of his questions. And I said, "I tried to do it several times, and it didn't work." He said, "Ah, that should be a good problem for three days." So the even staying was, you know. After three days, we went nowhere. And after six months, he admitted it was a more or less interesting problem. So finally, you know, a few weeks ago, managed to finish it. So this is a, I'll go over the construction, but as I said, this is not really the main focus of the talk. So the idea, so there is an example of countably compact sequential group of every sequential order. And unfortunately, it doesn't give a full answer to all Diman's questions. So precompact and pseudocompact groups are left out. And there is a, really, I think, algebraic idea. There is, I think, a ZFC obstacle, a combinatorial obstacle, that we don't know how to get over. But the positive side of the existence of such group is answered by this theorem. So it's the independence, the other way. So can you kill all the precompact and pseudocompact groups of weird sequential order? That's, oh, sorry. Can you kill all the groups that are sequential but not Frechets? In other words, can you make all sequential precompact and pseudocompact groups Frechet? That's still open. So that's the first question, and it's not explicit this day here. So I mentioned some obstacles, and this is a list, the first half of those obstacles. So all these groups are precompact. So every countably compact group is precompact. It's very easy to prove from the intrinsic characterization of precompact groups. And the precompact simply means that the group is a subgroup of a compact group or embedded within a compact group. But there is a characterization in terms of shifts of open subsets, and that gives you this lemma. So now, if you combine these with a theorem, but Peter Wile, in the case of a billion groups, because our example is a billion elementary valy, you'll get this lemma that every Boolean, by the way, I forgot to put the definition of Boolean. Boolean just means that A plus A is zero in that group. So those groups are necessarily a billion examples. They're simply subgroups of 2 to the power of omega_1. So you get this lemma that in every Boolean precompact group, the topology must be linear. In other words, the open, the base of open neighborhoods can be chosen to consist of subsets, cloped subsets. And another consequence of this is that when you add sequences to kill your witnesses, you can't just add a sequence. You have to add the whole group that's generated by the sequence and the closure that uses a whole cat set. So if you want to do something weird sequentially, it has to be linear. And that presents some challenges. So the naive approach to this, lemma, I mean, the naive approach to building a group of intermediate sequential orders would be to try to build groups of non-limit sequential orders of some kind of, you know, say, if we're just wondering about the lower portion of the ordinals, say, to build all the finite sequential order groups and then have some kind of product to get the ordinals that are limit ordinals. Because sequential order being a limit ordinal means that you have a countable number of witnesses to demonstrate that you can't get the closure in the desired number of steps. So this theorem gives a rough idea of why the product idea does not work directly. And this estimate of the sequential order of the product is, basically, you take the, you take the sequential orders of the individual groups, and you try to permute the orders to find the smallest possible sum of ordinals, and then you add one to that. So the difficulty is twofold. First of all, the sequential order in the sum grows too fast. So if you want to have a group of sequential order omega plus omega, one of those groups must have sequential order omega plus n. Well, the other group must also have a sequential order omega plus n. Because if it's finite, you can just put it on the bottom. You don't get the omega plus 1, plus n. But if you put the other one on top, you've just done the omega plus omega because there is another n waiting for you there. So you must have a group that not absorbed by omega in a sense. And even if you somehow manage to make your products behave nicely and grow slowly, that plus 1 spoils everything because you can't get around plus 1. It's more difficult even than to make the product work. So the idea is to emulate the product, but kind of have a tightening sequence that eventually collapses everything in a single group. Okay, so the construction is, I guess, also pretty standard. You have a sequence of groups that are determined by a reality with small number of subgroups, and then you have a metrizable, a rough topology at the top, and you make the construction converge to a single point after omega_1 steps. So what I mean by determined by a small number of groups is that those groups on the bottom are k omega. So k omega simply means that there is a countable collection of compacts. And in our case, there are compact subgroups that determine the topology. So you can tell the set is open by just looking at the intersection of each individual group. So then, you add compact groups to kill the sequences of high sequential order. But this has to be done carefully to preserve, to make the sequential order high enough. And that is done by the interplay between those rough metrizable topologies with those compacts that you're adding. So I'm not going to say anymore about adding compacts. But the idea behind adding new open sets lies in this hambanic type theorem. And the reason I call it a hambanic theorem is that, a hambanic theorem is essentially a theorem about separating a point from a subspace by a hyperplane. And this is very similar since every Boolean group is a vector space. And so it doesn't work in the general case of a Boolean topology. But if the topology is k omega, you can put a small separating group and then extend it to the whole group. And the proof really works very similar to how the actual hambanic group works with some minor differences. Well, and I'm going to go over the, as Diman calls it, the ugly part of the construction because he doesn't like elementary submodels. But the final step is to make sure that you've captured all the interesting topological phenomena in a countable manner. So if the group suddenly becomes not countably tight, then of course you lost signality right there. But to keep the group countably tight, you want to make sure that any closure can be captured in countably many steps. So you build this tower of elementary submodels, then look at when the elementary submodels, one of the submodels is intercepted by diamond, and then it reflects enough for the group so you can claim that you already have a closure of the set in this countable piece. So that's all about the construction. In the remaining few minutes, I'm going to mention the questions. So most of these questions are consistency questions, of course. And the first one is related to this example. Is it consistent that precompact and pseudocompact groups are Frechet? That's what I mentioned. This is the unanswered portion of Shapnitz's question. It's related to a question that I'm going to mention later, and that's the ZFC obstacle that, at least I think it's a ZFC obstacle. Maybe that's also a consistency question. So the next question is, can you now differentiate between those classes? So in other words, is it possible that maybe there is this precompact group that is not Frechet, but all countably compact groups are all Frechet? So that model that I mentioned does not provide that differentiation. Especially if the next question has a positive answer, then that model definitely cannot answer the previous question. So can, the question I'm talking about is, can a precompact group contain a close copy of the sequential fan S of omega? And what a sequential fan is, is just take a countably many convergent sequences and glue the limit point into one, and you get the space of the sequential fan. Of course, a countably compact group cannot contain a subspace like this simply because it has a discrete, closed discrete subspace. But can a precompact group contain them? It seems like the answer should be an obvious no, but I have no idea how to do that. And a related question is, can Z have a precompact sequential non-Frechet topology? So I can prove that no Boolean group can have such a topology. But not even any group of finite exponent can have that topology. But can Z have a precompact sequential non-Frechet topology? Then finally, well, actually not finally, there is one more slide. So this is a slightly more specific question. In the Cohen model, there are some interesting effects. For example, there are no countable groups that have intermediate sequential order in the Cohen model. But what about the upper levels of the hierarchy? Are there countably compact sequential groups that are not Frechet? So this would be another model similar to Michael's model, Michael Kouchak's. And to generalize that question about Z, is it possible to have a countable precompact sequential group that is not Frechet? That question either has a negative answer or, if it does have a positive answer, those groups cannot be Boolean. So there's some algebra involved with those groups. And I'm almost sure that they cannot be a billion. So there's a lot of algebra involved with this question. I do know for a fact that they cannot be Boolean, but a billion is a little crazy. So now, this has nothing to do with the topic. It has nothing to do with countably compact groups. But I think the first question is, what I would say, the correct version of Malickin's question. And Malickin's question was whether there are no metrizable, countable Frechet groups, of course. That question, of course, has been answered. But is it a model where all countable sequential groups are k omega? This would be kind of the ultimate sequential desert from the point of view of groups. So I do think that such a model exists, but I have no idea how to approach this. In that model, every sequential group will have a very simple naive construction. You start with an arbitrary topology. You tighten it to first countable topology, and then you relax that to a k omega topology. So there's going to be almost an algorithm to construct any sequential group you want. And there will be no other groups, no interesting sequential effects. The analysis in that model will be really very straightforward. Then, is it possible to omit a sequential order? And I think omitting sequential order 2 would be probably a challenging problem. The reason I think it's possible is that I do have a construction that kills all the groups of finite sequential order. And it's completely different from, and it doesn't really work for groups of infinite sequential orders. However, I didn't use it in the paper. But the existence of that construction makes me think that probably one could take advantage of something like that. And finally, this is a question asked by Michael Kouchak. Is it consistent, well, it's actually a specialization of this question. It's not exactly what he asked. But is it possible that there is some algebraic and nontrivial countable group that has a Frechet and a metrizable topology while the standard Boolean group does not? So that would actually give a different, very different proof or a different answer to Malickin's, not very different, but a different answer to Malickin's question. Because I think Michael Kouchak and Jörg Rendel wrote a paper specifically about the Boolean group, and it doesn't use half of the techniques that Houston used in the second group. But that's it. That's the last slide.
Any questions? Florence, please.
You mentioned countable tightness. Does it fit in here often? Is countably tight and tight sequential?
No, no, I don't think so. And there is no good intersection because countably tight compact means metrizable automatically for groups.
Sure, but you're not doing compact things.
Oh, sure, sure, yeah, but yeah, no countable tight.
So like sequentially compact plus countably tight, no man's land.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it's going to be any connection. Well, I mean, actually, I don't know what consistency strength is, but they definitely are countable.
Any other questions? I'd like to ask Florence for two more. Howard, lots of problems. How does that feel?
It's good.
The title is ladder system after four years associated.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the organizers and the tuition for organizing this session. So a ladder system, so I'll just try to explain what everything is. So a ladder system is a sequence of subsets of Omega 1 indexed by a stationary subset of Omega 1. And each element of, for each alpha in the stationary set, the ladder is simply an Omega sequence cofinal, cofinal in alpha. And there's a notion of what it means for a ladder system to be uniformizable. And the strongest version of uniformizability, I think, through Shalor or Devlin and Shalor, maybe Devlin helped formulate it. But it says that you, anytime you have a sequence of functions on the ladders into Omega, then you can find a single function on Omega 1 which is almost equal to each of the f alphas when restricted to L. So that's the strong version of uniformizability. And on Omega 1, every such lattice, any ladder system on Omega 1 on any stationary set is uniformizable. But there are weaker versions of this that are of interest. The probably the best known, and when I was told about uniformizability of ladder systems, this was the definition I was given. It's uniformizable if it's uniformizable with respect to sequences of constant functions. So I'll use this notation, P1 is not standard, but it does appear at least in one paper. So another way, if you can think about it, is instead of thinking about a sequence of constant functions on the ladders, of course, if the constant function has value n, you can think of that as just a function that sends the alpha element of this stationary set to n. Okay, so we're really talking about partitions of the stationary set into countably many pieces. Then there's a single function f which approximates, or up to a finite set, colors all the elements of the ladder according to what the color of the limit is. Okay, and from a topological point of view, this is equivalent to saying that a natural space that you can define from a ladder system is normal. So that space looks really like a, like a size space, which are more familiar for almost disjointed families. And the ladder system really is an almost disjointed family. It's not on Omega, it's on Omega 1. And the, so the points in Omega 1 are isolated, the elements in the ladder, which you can also think of as another copy of the stationary set E, their neighborhoods just pick up all but a finite set of the ladder. So the ladder itself as a subset of Omega 1 is a sequence which converges to the point which is the corresponding element to the ladder. So this uniformization property of the ladder system is equivalent to saying that this ladder system space is normal. All right, so, okay, which I say right there. So ladder system has this property P1, that is, it's uniformizable with respect to constant functions if and only if the space is normal. So there are, of course, other topological properties we look at other than normality. And a lot of these covering properties do have similar formalizations in terms of properties of ladder systems. So for example, without saying what countable metacompactness is, if you know what that is, lovely. If not, for this particular space, the name I'll use for this is M less than Omega, M for metacompact, less than Omega for reasons that will be obvious in a moment. So again, has the same flavor as the original one. If you partition the closed discrete set into countably many pieces, there's a single function which doesn't say exactly what the value is, but approximates the value of, on the alpha of Omega 1 up to a finite set. So there's a function from Omega 1 into finite subsets of Omega. And for every element, of course, f alpha is the color that we give to the ordinal alpha. And if you look at the betas inside of L alpha, we just want to say that that finite set has f alphas eliminated, has f alpha as an element of it for all but finitely many beta in the ladder. So we color Omega 1, and if you look at the beta's ladder, I mean, the alpha's ladder, you know, alpha has color n. If you look at the finite sets associated, n has to be an element of all but finitely many of those. That actually is equivalent to saying that the corresponding, that the size space or the size like space is countable metacompact. Okay. And I'm cheating here a little bit. For countable paracompactness, this is not exactly equivalent, but it is a natural property. It's stronger than countable paracompactness. Actually, I don't know if it's equivalent, but it's very close. It's just simpler to state this way. So a ladder system is P less than Omega. If, again, for every partition, same thing as M less than Omega, but in addition, you ask that the function f restricted to L alpha is eventually constant. So you don't have these finite sets growing, but they have to be the same from some point on as you move along one of the ladders. Okay. And there's a whole bunch more. Okay. You can guess what these are. So P1 and M1 are the same because you're saying you're picking out one single set if you want. Pn and Mn are closely related. This Mn would be, if you remember from the previous slide, your functions went from Omega 1 into the finite subsets of Omega. That's the less than Omega here. If I have n here, I have an n here, so you're taking n element subsets. And of course, those n element subsets can be different as you go up the ladder. With Pn, it has to be eventually constant, so it's some point on it's the same. So all of these appeared in this paper back in 2004 with Ballo, Isaworth, Gary, Ola Pavlov and myself. And so these were the uniformization properties in the title. I'll tell you in a moment about some of the anti-uniformization properties. But a few things about them. For example, you can always, there are always sort of trivial ladder systems that are M less than Omega. So for example, I don't know if everyone can see this, but if you have some alpha and you look at the alpha's ladder, you can think that, what is the, what is the n element of the ladder look like? And so it'll be, like, if you choose it to be of the form beta plus n for a limit ordinal beta, then that trivial kind of ladder system can be colored by taking increasing sequences of finite sets. So there are some ladders which are, you can prove, that are provably M less than Omega. As I said before, I mean, Omega 1 implies that they are the strongest uniformization properties, so all of these properties are satisfied. Under diamond, you can build, well, diamonds, none of them have any of the other properties. So no ladder system can be, have any of the other properties. And you do that by fixing ladder system which was capturing the possible uniformization functions, and you build a pathological partition along the diamond sequence. And also implies that there is a ladder system which is not M less than Omega. So the Isaworth's main contribution to that paper was showing that it's consistent with CH, for example, that every ladder system can satisfy Pn plus 1, but fail to satisfy Mn. So, sorry, just scroll back to the previous slide. It will satisfy Pn plus 1, so everything in the diagram from here below is consistent, it holds true in that model, but everything before and above fails. So there's, they look kind of like they should maybe perhaps be the same, but they're not. Oh, sorry. Okay, all right. So that's related to uniformization properties, some of the things that were known before. So I want to say something about the recent progress with these. And this is joint work with Cesar Caral Rojas, who was a master student of Fernando's at University of Mitchell Can and is now doing his PhD with Michael. And in between, he came and worked on these problems. So the one I wanted to work on is what happens in these models obtained by forcing with a Suslin tree S over a model of MA of S. So MA of S is, of course, Martin's axiom for partial orders that has CCC product with this given Suslin tree. And I'll say, maybe if I have time, why this is a natural question to ask. But if you work in this area, you know that one of the aspects of these, of this model is that some aspects of Martin's axiom hold in the extension, while some combinatorial aspects of V equals L hold in the extension. And for the main problem, which I was wanting to work on, but this is only half of it, that's exactly the type of combinatorics I need. Okay, so, give it, grant me maybe the patience that this is a natural question to look at this model. So there were two results. One of them is really has nothing to do with what holds in the ground model. If you does force with a Suslin tree, then no ladder system satisfies this countable paracompactness property or any of these Mn properties. But at the same time, if you force with a Suslin tree over this weak MA model, then all ladder systems in the extension satisfy this M less than Omega. All right, and that was good, because this was really, I'll say something now about the open question that was left from that paper with Gary and others. It was concerned with this, with this uniformization property. Okay, so anti-uniformization properties. So I won't go through all of them and give you the big table of the whole family of them. But the main one that we were interested in in that paper is what it mean for a ladder system to be thin. I think that's Gary or Zolli's terminology, okay. So ladder system is thin if anytime you look at a function from Omega 1 into Omega, then on a club, the function restricted to L alpha has to be finite. So this is very much an anti-uniformization property in the strong sense of uniformization. Because if I take this, if I have a ladder system and I take a sequence of one-to-one functions on each of the ladders, if I can uniformize that, then the function restricted to each ladder would have infinite range. So this says that that can happen. In fact, the range is finite for club many elements or relative to the stationary set club many elements. Now, this by itself is a rather difficult property to obtain consistently. V equals L, not just diamond, but stronger versions of diamond, I think our paper, I think there were proof from Diamond Sharp. But Ken Koonin was looking at this and had a very nice proof from V equals L that's really actually easier to read than the Diamond Sharp proof. But I don't have anything from a weaker assumption in V equals L, that there are thin, there are thin ladder systems. And there are some other instances where you can get consistent examples of thin ladder So the problem was that we were looking at is inconsistent that there may be a ladder system that is both thin and has this weak uniformization property M less than Omega. Now, the reason there's so many authors on this is because if there is, there are counter examples to both questions on the next slide. And one question came from two of the authors, another question came from Gary and Zolli's work from some time, five or 10 years before I came across this. And here are the two questions with a little bit of history. So one of them is motivated by Zolli's result that normal locally compact screenable spaces are paracompact. And at that time, and still, believe it or not, sometimes still today, when somebody sees a result of normality, they ask, what can you say about countable paracompact spaces? So Ed Daniels had these, a couple of different models or construction or proofs that's consistent that countable paracompact locally compact screenable spaces are paracompact. And the question, of course, is this, can that be proven in CFC? Okay, that's still open. However, if there is a, as I said on the previous slide, if there is a ladder system that is M less than Omega and thin, then there's a counter example. In fact, there's an if and only if, if you generalize those properties from Omega 1 up to some kappa, then there is a counter example if and only if for some kappa there is such a ladder system. The other one is about, again, relationship between normality and paracompactness in subsets of Omega 1 plus Omega 1. We proved that normal subsets of these are countable paracompact. And the converse is also open. Seems strange that it would be difficult to prove that. But again, if you have such a ladder system which is M less than Omega and thin, then there is a counter example. So that was my, my hope, that in this model of forcing a Suslin tree over a model of MA of S, one would hopefully get a, maybe find that all ladder systems are M less than Omega, and we had half of it, and that we could then construct a ladder system that was thin, but alas, titled by this slide.
I worked with alas.
Excuse me?
Enjoyed working with alas.
I worked with alas a lot. So in the model of DA, I forced with a Suslin tree over a model of MA Omega 1 S, no ladder system is thin. And in fact, I didn't subject you to the weakenings of thinness, there are, I think, a total six of these anti-uniformization properties. The weakest one is it actually fails. So none of these anti-uniformization properties are a hold. So that was, so no ladder system satisfies even the weakest of those anti-uniformization properties in this paper. So I go back and forth thinking that perhaps there must be a theorem that uniformizable ladder systems in the sense of P1 must, I mean, in sense of M less than Omega can't be thin. But if you go back to that table, that's not the strongest form of uniformization or flaws, but that P1, I don't even know about P1. Okay, so it's not known if P1 implies not thin. It seems hard. Okay, I have a little time, so maybe I'll sketch one of the easiest of these. And they're kind of the same, but I'll focus on the Mn. So you probably don't remember Mn, but maybe we'll remind ourselves as we go, but how does it go? So we have a Suslin tree, so it's subset of Omega less than Omega 1, everywhere Omega splitting, and we're gonna force with that. And we want to show that if I have any ladder system in the extension, I can color it in a pathological way, so it can't be uniformized somehow, somehow. Okay, so we have this ladder system, so I don't know, I don't know the stationary set in the ground, no, the stationary sets in the extension. Okay, first thing we do is we can fix a club. I'll try to draw another picture here. So here's my stationary set, I'm sorry, here's my Suslin tree. And I want to fix a club, so that if I look at any alpha in Omega 1, if I go to the, alpha plus is the minimal element of the club above alpha, if I go to that level, then any S in here will decide the ladder system up to alpha. So that means a couple of things. It means that it decides whether or not alpha is in E, right? And if it does force that alpha is in E, it decides what the whole ladder is, what the whole L alpha ladder is. Okay, so in some sense, if I'm here, if alpha's in E, then I have, I think of the ladder as coming up to alpha, it just, it knows what that L alpha is. Because Suslin trees don't have this. Okay, so how, now I said I promised you we have to give a pathological coloring. So what we do is, we look at the, okay, so let's just work in the extension instead of defining the ground model, a name in the ground model. So take a generic branch through the Suslin tree, and we define a function from E into Omega by looking at an alpha in E, going up to that alpha plus, look what the branch's value is at alpha plus, and then let that be the coloring. Okay, so we look here at what B of alpha plus is, and now we think, why is this pathological enough? So imagining the extension, we have associated to each of these ordinals a set of size N. So remember, now here I have F beta is an element of Omega to the N, so it's some L element subset, I have infinitely many of them. So I imagine the branch restricted to alpha. So the first thing is, if I have such a coloring, club often, I can decide what the value is before alpha. So I can find an alpha which is in my club C, and below here, this coordinate decides the value of the function below. All right, now, I have a sequence of sets of size N in Omega, so there must be a natural number that is not in that sequence infinitely often. Because if every natural number was in all of them, then I would have, they would have to grow, they have to be of size bigger than it, they have to be growing in size to cover all of Omega. So there's a natural number which is not in infinitely many of them. And then I extend my B at alpha plus to have that value.
There's infinitely many of them, but N is not it.
They're infinitely many, and N is not it. So you take that value of N, and that contradicts how this function is supposed to uniformize. Okay, so that's, that's really the proof. The other proofs are similar. And M less than Omega, the key there is that there, the finite sets are allowed to grow in size, they don't have to be fixed. And so they can be taken to be growing larger. So if you have enough Martin's axiom in the ground model, you can, you can define a partial order, that's only CCC, but has CCC product with this Suslin tree, and you use it to color the Suslin tree in the right way, and then the generic branch will have the right, the right property. Okay, so that gives you at least a flavor of it. That's all I have, so thank you.
Are there any questions, Lawrence Lichten?
Yes.
Not really about yourself, but you mentioned MA of S versus MA Omega 1 of S.
Oh, that was probably a typo. I only need it for Omega, I only need.
Of course, that's what you need, but I was just wondering, is there any result, does he have MA of S rather than MA of N?
Oh, I don't know. But.
Because P of A of S, of course.
Sure, sure, yeah, no, but this, yeah. And the other thing I guess I should point out is I, I didn't need S to be coherent, and that this was MA for a single coherent Suslin tree, so this really.
But then you don't have MA of S.
Yeah, you can still, you can still have MA of S, you just, you just don't have, in the forcing extension, there are no Suslin trees. There are still Suslin trees that can survive, but, no, I had the same impression that there was something fishy going on, but, yeah, you can, you can have, even for a non-coherent Suslin tree, MA of S, right? And then that iteration theorem holds, but then when you force with a Suslin tree, you still have other Suslin trees running around. So clearly, my, my hope and intuition that this might be an interesting model to look at was alas, flawed. I still think, this result that there, every ladder system has this property M less than Omega, not any of the other ones, is new, I don't think anyone looked at that before.